Evening. It is Wednesday, September 17th, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the RSU 67th Board of Directors. I would remind you that this meeting is live streamed, and I will now call this meeting to order. Rose.
I'm not ready. Give me two seconds. You're gonna have to call the roll. I'm not ready. I don't have it up.
We will now have roll call. Randy Lee Bishop.
Present.
Diane Buck is here. William Chuck.
Here.
Andrew Fennaro.
Here.
Rebecca Hanscom.
Present.
Allison Harris.
Here.
Mary Hawkes.
Here.
Diana Lambert.
Here.
Patricia Noble.
Here.
Mary Bluhus.
Here.
Norma Priest.
Here.
Danielle Worcester.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Downing, have we adjustments to the agenda?
We do. We've added item D from the original agenda, which is an executive session to prepare the board.
I will now entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to enter into executive session according to one MRSA state statute, 405-6E, to consult with our attorney.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
The attorneys aren't in charge.
Hearing none, we will move to vote. All of those in favor?
Everybody work for us.
Opposed?
Yeah.
And the motion is carried. We are back in session. And... The time is 6:41. I will now entertain a motion to approve the September 3rd, 2025 school board meeting minutes as written. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Diana, seconded by Mary. Is the discussion. Hearing none.
Just on that first line where we talked about the approval of the minutes and says unanimously, it should be one abstain, the rest is yes.
Thank you.
For September 3rd, Randy?
Yeah. Okay, noted. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Shouldn't we say no action coming out of the executive session? Because we didn't do anything. We have to kind of bring it out.
There was no action taken from executive session. We will now vote on the minutes, the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion is carried unanimously. Under communication, Mr. Downing.
At Madanook Academy, the stipend positions, and they're paid according to the collective bargaining agreement, are the following: Student Council, Kelton Rose; National Honors Society, Sarah Kraus; Senior Class Advisors, Kelton Rose and Melanie Turner; The Fall Play is Melinda Boynton; Pep Band for the Fall is Melinda Boynton; Pep Band for the Winter is Melinda Boynton; The Spring Musical Director is Melinda Boynton; Yearbook is Jesse Alexander; Math Team Coach is Sarah Kraus; AP Chemistry is Kelton Rose; AP Computer Science is Sarah Kraus; AP English Literature, not at this time; AP Environmental Science is Delaney Rideout; AP Psychology is Raymond Tilton; AP English Language is Raymond Tilton; USM History 131 is Philip Stanley; USM History 102 is Philip Stanley; EMCC History 104 is Philip Stanley; MAT 120 Statistics is Sarah Kraus; MAT 122 Precálculus is Sarah Kraus; MAT 152 Calculus is Sarah Kraus; English 100 is Raymond Tilton. Next, Madanook Junior High School stipend positions. Yearbook is Shayla Neal at 3,000; Student Council is Rachel McNeil at 900; Math Team is Wendy Cole and Dan McKeckren at 1,300 each. Number three Certification Chair is Casey Sherman at 2,000; Number four McKinney Vento Layzorn is Rose Marie Clark at 1,000; And number five, Madanook Junior High School Fall Sports. The Fall Cheer Coach is Kaylee Severance; And the Volunteer Assistant Girls Soccer Coach, Laura Reed and Emily Ireland.
Thank you. Before we move on to public's comment, I have a statement which you all need to hear. I want to thank you all for being here tonight and to our local law enforcement for being here to help us ensure an orderly meeting. Before we begin with public comment, I just want to share that I have received several emails and calls from my neighbors about concerns over what has been happening. While you know we can't discuss personnel issues in open session, please do not assume that you know what the board's feelings are on these concerns and whether we do or do not share the very same concerns that you do. The board appreciates you all being here tonight. The public comment period tonight will not exceed 30 minutes. And each speaker's comments will be limited to three minutes. We will be using a timer and will give each speaker a fair warning before their time is up. And you will be able to see the timer, which is right here to my left.
We don't need a fair warning. We can see, madam. Thank you. Don't interrupt me.
The board will hear public comments from residents of the school unit first. If there is time remaining in the public comment period, once all residents have had an opportunity to speak, the board will permit comments from non-residents. Those who wish to speak need to have signed up on the sign-up sheet ahead of time. Speakers are expected to adhere to the following rules in accordance with policy BEDH. Please identify yourself, your name and town of residence at the beginning of your comments and address your comments to the board chair. You are expected to follow rules of common etiquette and decorum and refrain from engaging in disruptive conduct, including but not limited to using vulgar and/or obscene language, yelling, threatening others, making effamatory comments, refusing to stop speaking when your time is up, or otherwise disrupting the orderly process of the meeting. If you disrupt the meeting, you may be asked to leave. Discussion of personnel and student matters are not permitted during the public comment period due to the privacy, confidentiality, and due process rights of district employees and students. Please direct any concerns about personnel or student matters to the superintendent or to another appropriate administrator. And I thank you for your attention. And we will now begin. And the first sheet that has been handed to me is from Heather Severance. Heather, if you would approach the podium. And begin by stating your name and your town of residence.
My name is Heather Severance. I live in Lincoln. I have a child currently in Madanook Academy. First of all, I'd like to say good evening, members of the board. I'd like to address the audience. I would love for this to remain a respectful place for everybody to speak and feel valued and not for anybody to sling personal attacks around the room. So, my speech. The moment ideology replaces facts, our schools fail their most basic duty to the students. As a parent, I believe one of the most important responsibilities of our schools is to provide education that is fair, balanced, and free from bias and ideology. Our children should be taught how to think. I do not believe that our children should be taught what to think. When classrooms and teachers lean towards particular viewpoints, trust is lost. Parents, like myself, worry, and students are left without the full picture. Teaching should be about the facts, critical thinking, and the ability to weigh different perspectives. This isn't about avoiding tough subjects. On the contrary, I want my daughter to learn and to form her own opinions on tough subjects. It's about ensuring those subjects are presented in a way that gives students the tools to analyze, question, and come to their own conclusions. That is how we prepare them for the real world, something that some educators countrywide are failing to do in recent years. I respectfully urge this board to take the steps tonight to safeguard academic neutrality in schools, to open conversation through teacher and curriculum review -- excuse me -- and transparency with families. Together, we have the opportunity to make classrooms a place of learning, not ideology. The decline in Maine's education system makes us reality even more urgent. In 1990, Maine was ranked number one in the nation for education. Today, we are ranked at the very bottom, 50th. Closer to home, RSU 67th is ranked 147th out of 191 school districts in our state. This dramatic decline should alarm all of us. It is proof that change is not only necessary, but it is very long overdue. Our children deserve truth, not agendas, and it's our duty to make sure that they get it. Thank you for your time and for all your commitment to our child's future.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. Next is Steve Olson.
I'm Steve Olson, live in Chester. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Without knowing much of the details of what's come up recently, I at least know that it hits the nerve that I think it's hit for a lot of parents and a lot of community members of kind of what's going wrong in our country in general. I think the only area of circle of influence that we have is in our own communities. It's in our own town, in our own school board. And that's why I'm here today. I've served as chair and councilor of Millauke before for about six years, so I understand and appreciate your position. And we don't know what each of your individual stances are on this. So I do at least respectfully want to speak to you generally as a group. I feel like, in general, kids that go through most school systems in Maine are not prepared for the world that they're going into. This world is chaotic, clearly getting more and more so, and very complex. And although many of you may be well intentioned, the results are speaking for themselves. I know a lot of children that have gone through this school have come out with a lot of bad experiences and things to say. That's not on each one of you as an individual, but that is a responsibility of this community to make sure that the outcomes actually match what we want to see happen. I personally don't mind the amount of money that's spent on a school. It can be even twice as much. It's not the budget that matters to me. It's what are the results? I personally would like to at least suggest the idea moving forward. If there's a spirit of the same, you know, if other people feel the same way that I do about this, maybe having a subcommittee of this board that can investigate what that might look like. What could next steps be as a community? Maybe completely, a number of parents from the community and a couple of board members to sit on it as well. But being constructive, I think, is the only thing we can do here. Tearing the board down, tearing the community down, is not the answer. We need to be constructive and have new ideas to try and lead for a better future for our kids, and that's what matters to me and most. I've got two kids that live with me and another one on the way. I don't want them here. I'm homeschooling them both. And it's for the same reason that I'm sure a lot of parents in this crowd feel, and it's too bad. I want them to feel safe. I want them to be able to express what they feel, what they think, and not be shot down or told, "You actually gotta believe the opposite." I don't feel like that can happen in this school, unfortunately. That's why I live at home and am being homeschooled. If you're interested in that idea--
You have.
Thank you. If you're interested in that idea of a subcommittee or a committee that can explore maybe next steps for these students for this town, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next up is Adam Michaels.
Good evening. My name is Adam Michaels. I'm a parent of two incoming freshmen this year, and I live right here in Lincoln. For some reason, something I've written here was against the rules, please say so. There's a lot of chatter going on, so I couldn't hear everything I've stated. But I'm just gonna read whatever I've written. Well, my children have come to me since day one with concerns of faculty and some unorthodox teaching methods. I don't want to beat a dead horse of what everybody hears kind of going on. My concerns go deeper than inconsiderate comments about the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Let's be honest, there's more than one faculty member to have done so on September 11th. Or even the comments about distaste for one's parents or what they do to them, or whether it may or may not be okay to burn down the school. I have concerns about the curriculum and what's being taught in certain classes, like how does cannibalism fit into US History 1? Unless you're talking about like the ill-fated Donner Party of 1846, or what books we allow teachers to use in class to teach from. A comic book that their spouse wrote about evolution containing mocking of religion doesn't really seem to fit the bill of appropriate school literacy. And while the concerns seem to be the subject matter of today, I'd still rather put a focus on something that I really hope the school board will listen and pay attention to and maybe withhold in its standards going forward. Teachers, educators, should be focused on teaching students to think, not what to think. Educators should allow students to engage and debate about politics, policy, or even current events. However, their personal opinions and affiliations should not be part of that conversation. A person in power and great influence over such young influential minds should not be inflicting their personal beliefs upon them, but allow them to engage one another in a safe place where their thoughts, their ideas, can be explored amongst their peers with no right or wrong answers. As an employer of high school kids, I've had several come to me over the past week, some upset by what was said, but some also upset as though one of the faculty members is being bullied by the community and overreacting to what may have been said. For them, this faculty member has been a safe place for them to go as they feel like they've been getting bullied in the schools, maybe through what their sexuality is or what gender they may identify as. Make no mistake--
Fifteen to that kind of--
Like many of you, I have no tolerance for that kind of hate. I had the same thing happen to me when I was in school. And homophobic slurs yelled at us. But this isn't okay. I won't be able to finish in time.
I yield my time to this gentleman. Ted on the list.
That is not allowed by our policy.
It is by the regular form we're going here, by the rules of Robert's Rules, that's allowed.
Yes.
I literally have 15 seconds left. I'm on the last paragraph. If that's okay.
Just let him finish.
I was one of those kids who walked the very halls with homophobic slurs yelling at them. I was in this room 24 years ago on the Two Towers spell, watched it live on TV right over here, watched people jump to their death because they had no other way out. I can't imagine what it would have been like to have a teacher come up to me and say, "That didn't matter." I don't feel bad for those people. So I'm just saying, let's please hold our teachers accountable to not discuss their religious beliefs, their political beliefs, but to engage kids in discussing these things amongst themselves. And the only thing is make it longer be attending the class.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Nicole Downs.
Yeah, I just signed to defer my time to somebody if it's needed.
Ted Downs.
I give my time to somebody else.
William Davis. William Davis.
Hello again. I'm Bill Davis. I live in Lincoln. I have three brief policy comments. I was on the board here for three years and subbed in chemistry for a couple months and subbed in general, so I kind of know my way around the high school a bit. I was a college professor for 25 years. My first comment is that it's not possible to overestimate the importance of professionalism in our teachers or professors. You know, I was a professor. I had a PhD. I had tenure. But I knew damn well that I would not be looked upon well by my dean or my colleagues or my students, or my students. If I said something that was really stupid or really offensive or that I was, you know, even a little bit aware that, you know, there's a fundamentalist Christian in my class. I don't have to announce her. I love everything that he agrees with. I make darn sure that I don't blatantly insult them or put them down, partly because it's unprofessional, but also partly because it alienates the students. You know, you take a fundamentalist Christian student and have the second semester biology teacher, you know, just tell you, "Okay, we're going to do evolution, and anybody who doesn't believe in evolution is really an idiot," blah, 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 blah. That student's shut off. That student doesn't listen to the rest of them. The biology teacher dealing with it, you know, has to be fairly smart, but they have to do it. Okay. And professionalism is, you know, determined by the policy, by the principal and the superintendent. And man, if your teachers don't know what the standards are here, then you've got problems. My second point is that community opinion of RSU 67 is really important, particularly today, since COVID and people started watching, you know, third grade teachers on TV at home and taking a lot more interest in what goes on in their schools. I mean, you know, parents and citizens' nerves are short and--
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Davis.
Okay. They have every right to have a say in policies. They have every right to participate, and they have every right to understand what policy, what personnel decisions have been made and why, and to do so in a personal manner. Names don't need to be taught, you know. But the community cares. They are the kids' parents. They own this place, and their taxes paid for your salary.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dakota Downs.
No, I give my minutes to somebody that needs them.
Brian Kraus.
Did you say Brian Kraus?
I did.
Please.
He's the one that said the things about Charlie Kirk. Why is his name on there?
That was the she. I was ant it. So we will move on. Kim Susie.
Kim Susie, Lincoln, Maine. "The disappearance of a sense of responsibility is the most far-reaching consequence of submission to authority," it's Stanley Milner. So we've talked about this at length. I'm not sure what everybody keeps talking about, being constructive and-- I don't know what it's going to take. I've tried. Hours, hours, we talked. Still hired him. "That quote emphasizes the danger of blindly submitting to authority that leads you to shirking your personal responsibility for your actions." "You gave 10 days in-school suspension for sexual assault." That's what it was, sexual assault on January 30th. "You hired a soccer coach with misconduct as a male nurse." "Misconduct on Governor Mills letterhead." "You allow a male student into the girls' bathroom, and you don't even know who he is." I do, because he was at my house at my daughter's 15th birthday party. He's a wonderful boy. Sadly, he's being interfered with by medical doctors now. "You kept Brewer on the payroll."
I'm sorry, Kim. We are not allowed to use names.
We're not having a discussion. She can say anything she pleases. There's no discussion between you and her.
I want to be constructive, but I have tried to help you. I sat in here and told you no means no, women don't have to consider men's feelings before they say no, and they shouldn't. No means no. Don't teach little girls that they have to consider a man in a ponytail's feelings before they tell him, "No, you can't invade my space or my boundaries." If you're in charge, you're responsible for your decisions and your actions. The people outside of this room and outside of this building, people in Oregon, whoever is controlling schools these days, the National Education Association, whoever it might be, they aren't looking me in the eye. I trust you. I trusted you, Principal Turner. I trust you, Mr. Weatherby. I trust you, Mr. Farnaro. I trust you, Ms. Hasko. I took my kid and I gave her to you. While you were out in an executive session, I read a few things from your yearbook. Jessie Alexander, I don't know if she was in charge of this. Oh, no, that's what she was named. "I will always remember Will bringing his Xbox into school and playing Fortnite." One says, "I will always remember the times I wanted to burn this place to the ground." These are seniors last year. The teacher whose daughter overdosed in the bathroom--
Fifteen seconds, Mrs. Susie.
She didn't write anything down. That's very telling to me. Her mother's a teacher, and she wrote nothing. I didn't change. The school district did for my daughter.
Thank you, Mrs. Susie. Andrew Laverdiere.
Okay.
Really?
Really.
Hand those up, please.
I don't think I can.
Do we have to give them to the chair? I can just-- is there a microphone here or? Okay. Well, my name's Andrew Laverdiere. I'm here from Bangor, and I'm just a taxi driver, but I was a 20-year Lyndon LaRouche activist in his political campaign. And typically, we would fight over the issue of what is the nature of mankind. And what we're discussing here is why your school is treating your child like an animal and brainwashing them. I've got the quotes I just gave them about the policy of dumbing down the population to make you go along with the banker's dictatorship. Because the issue for Mr. LaRouche, as he told the young people, is "Education is about rediscovering the greatest ideas mankind has gone through." And that's what we need, because we have a rapidly changing world where we have to have the United States go back to being an industrial and manufacturing country, and we can't do that if we're brainwashing young people to say, "You are an animal." Right? You're governed by your biological needs. Because right now, we have to have people that know how to fix things and manufacture and invent. That's what we need. But we have a school system that designed to keep people slaves of Wall Street. That is the basic facts. As I said, I do in my little sheets there about, like I said, these policies of brainwashing you and making you go along with worse living standards while Wall Street gets endless bailouts. So that is the question. And for these people, don't blame them too much. They're like good Germans. If you've heard that term before, these are good Germans that just went along, right, with what the authorities said. And that was at the Nuremberg Trials, where they said, "I'm just following orders, sir." And unfortunately, they got hung for that. So that is your moral aptitude right now. Are you willing to stand up to immoral and wrong policies? Maybe, maybe not, but this is the question, right? Man is not an animal, as demonstrated by Socrates 2,500 years ago. And our founding fathers put this in the Declaration of Inimit, they said, "You are made in the image of the Creator," that we are born with powers of reason that allow us to be useful citizens that participate and contribute to our future of us and our posterity. Because that is the issue, and you can't do it if you're going to castrate kids.
Fifteen seconds, Mr.--
Right?
Fifteen seconds, sir.
If you're going to castrate the kids, there's no future, none. That is the issue. So then that issue for all of you is, do we stand up and throw all these guys out? Or do you go at the top? "Which side are you on, boy? Which side are you on?"
Thank you for coming. Tim Bodnar.
Please don't interrupt me when my time is near done. I can watch the clock. Thank you. My name is Timothy J. Bodnar. I am the truth-slinger. And tonight, I greet you in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, I ask now that over this meeting, you bring down the fire of God. You bring down the truth, the raw truth that needs to be told and needs to be heard. And I ask, Father, you are the only one that can break and open hearts to receive truth. And I ask that you do that in Jesus' name. Dream of speech is fine. You can have all the opinions you want, ladies and gentlemen, but it is not okay to glee in the death of another human being. That is unacceptable, unacceptable. And I'm here to tell you, I'd rather be in the woods right now burying my dog and putting my tractor together, but I got to come down here and give y'all numbskulls a speech. Now, I'm going to mention Brian Kraus, and I'm going to mention Derek Brewer. You can bang down all you want, lady. It's said. These people have communist propaganda that is in a book--
This meeting is in progress.
On-- it is in a book that is in a social studies class. Where are you going? There it is, communist literature. I want to know what you're going to do about that.
We are back in session. Mr. Bodnar, I would like you to continue with your comments. Please respect our rules of no yelling and no identifying people by name.
I've already said them by name, ma'am. I don't have to say them again. You're public record now. And I demand their firing. I demand their immediate firing because your lack of action when this has been brought to your attention, that someone wished the death upon others, and you're okay with this? And there are people that are upset about this, and you couldn't give a crap about it? And there are people that are upset about this, and you couldn't give a crap about it. That's what this says to people. And my tone of voice is not yours to monitor, ma'am. How many decibels I speak, you cannot ask me to leave. I will not play by your rules, I will not be silenced by you anymore, okay? This LGBTQAI+ nonsense, and people wishing death on us, the Christians, and you know what? This is what, this is what a guy named Destiny said. He said, "Those people are so dangerous, their ideology is so backward, so primitive, so hateful, that we have absolutely no choice but to kill them first, because they are a threat to us." And you're pumping that shit into kids' heads, your teachers are pumping that shit into kids' heads. And I demand it stop, I demand, I demand counseling for the kids that were hurt by Charlie Kirk's death that he dissed. This is, he can, he can have free speech, he just can't have a job on taxpayer money. You need to protect yourself and correct yourself and get rid of him. It is the will of the people, and we are done with you with your rules. She won't even look at me. You're a foul and evil woman. You're a coward. Why don't you look at me? Hey, hey! You want to talk to me?
Don't you insult that woman. Don't you insult that woman.
Why not?
Because she's doing the best she can, and you don't know what we think.
She's not doing the best she can.
You don't know what we think, we haven't even made a decision yet.
You should have made a decision when you found out. When did you know? When did you know?
On Friday, we're taking it, we're doing the best we can.
You're too slow. The world is moving on way too fast for you, old man. I'm serious.
Our end resets.